Yeah. Okay.
Oh.
It is 6:30 PM. So let me call this regular meeting of the City Council on WPCA to order. We have a pretty steep lineup of public hearings and regular meeting agenda items. So let's jump right in. For the record, it is Monday, October 6, 2025. We have a quorum of council members all attending in person. Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette, and Councilman Oliver, excuse me. So before we jump into the agendas, could we kindly stand and touch the flag? All right. First on the lineup is a public hearing for the purposes of soliciting citizen input regarding changes to Chapter 85, Building Construction Alteration, Renovation, and Demolition, or revisions to Chapter 114, Fees, Citation Procedures and Fines for Zoning Violations. Excuse me. And/or revisions to Chapter 114, Fees, Citation Procedures and Fines for Inland Wetlands and Water Course Violations. Before I open the meeting, the hearing to the public, do we have the... Oh, there you are. Do we have a legal notice?
Yes, Mayor. Notice is hereby given that the City of Torrington Board of Councilmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 6, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to receive public comment on proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, including revisions to Chapter 85, Building Construction, revisions to Chapter 114, Fees, for Sections 114-2 and 114-7. The full texts of the proposed changes are available on the city website and in the office of the city clerk. Members of the public may attend in person or via Zoom. All attendees will be allotted up to three minutes to comment. Participation instructions are available on the city website. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 30th day of September, 2025. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right. So at this point, I'd like to open the hearing to the public for any comments on the proposed changes to either Chapter 85, Chapter 14, or Chapter 114. And because it's a public hearing, I'm going to call this three times and then call for the closing of the meeting three times. So second call, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council with regard to changes, proposed changes to Chapter 85 and to Chapter 114 of the city ordinances? Third call, anyone from the public wishing to address the council regarding Chapter 85, Chapter, or Chapter 114? Seeing and hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. It calls for an adjournment, but I don't think we have to. I just close. All right. Let's move into the next agenda item. Is it two? Do we have two public hearings? Or just that one?
Just the one.
Oh, you put all three in the same one?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Way to move us along into the regular agenda. All right. So for the record, it is now 6:34 PM, and I will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council. And item number one on the meeting is a roll call vote by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed changes to Chapter 85, the Code of Ordinances, Building Construction, Alteration, Renovation, and Demolition. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and seconded by Councilman Oliver. Motion is made and seconded. Are there questions?
I would like to have Kevin be able to come up and just highlight, you know, particularly some of the changes. It's too much for me to do, Kevin, so I'm deferring to you. And primarily as it relates to the fees.
So we, as you had indicated, the old ordinance and the way it was written was pretty involved, a lot to understand. So we've sort of streamlined and modified and simplified this current version. Basically boils down to an additional $5 for the first $1,000 of estimated cost for a permit, and then $3 for each $1,000 of job value thereafter.
And I just realized that we're not on the fee motion. Those are the following two. But I know that basically the ordinance was totally removed, the old ordinance, and replaced with the new ordinance that you and corporate counsel had worked on, correct?
Correct. Yeah. It's basically a completely revised version, yes.
Yeah. Which everyone should have in their packet, but I just... They put a lot of time into this, and, you know, I appreciate actually the work that you have done with the department and our corporate counsel, who isn't here for us to thank, so.
Actually, he is, he is on Zoom.
Oh, yeah?
If there was a question for legal corporation counsel. All right. Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions on this motion, it is a roll call. So I will start to my left, Councilman Oliver.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rouette.
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino.
Aye.
Councilman Iveyne.
Yes.
And Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
All right. It's unanimous. Item number two, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed revision to Chapter 114, Fees, Citation Procedures and Fines on Zoning Violations.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for any questions.
And just so you know, it was presented again, both, all three of these were presented to the ordinance committee with unanimous approval after discussion.
Thank you. And Jeremy is here. If there are any questions to the city planner? None? All right. Guess you're off the hook. All right. I'm going to call it. Again, it's roll call, starting to my left, Councilman Oliver.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rouette.
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino.
Aye.
Councilman Iveyne.
Yes.
And Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item three, roll call vote again. I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt proposed revisions to Chapter 114, Fees, Citation Procedures, and Fines for Inland Wetlands and Water Course Violations.
Show moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open to questions or comments?
JV or...
Yeah. We're good?
I'm good.
All right. No questions? No comments? All right. Roll call, again to my left.
Aye.
Councilman Oliver, Councilwoman Rouette.
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino, Councilman Iveyne.
Yes.
Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
All right. It's unanimous. All right. That's great work on the ordinance committee's part, really.
Well, and the department heads and certainly our corporate counsel.
Yeah. All right. We're moving into item four. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Show moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Seconded.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council on other matters? Seeing and hearing none. Move into item five. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of September 15, 2025. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, it doesn't require a motion, but just so I can control the discussion, if there are questions, I'll, I'll call the motion for discussion purposes. So thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're up. End the discussion.
Can we give him a round of applause?
Absolutely.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I stand before you as the Fire Chief of the Torrington Fire Department. I just want to start this discussion by a little thing I typed up here. I want to say how proud I am of the men and women of our department. On the morning of September 28, with a minimum staffing of 11, they were encountered with what will be known as Torrington's second-largest fire by area, the Catholic Fire, still first. Their common experience and leadership allowed them to set in motion a chain of events that contained the fire to those three buildings. I am proud to be their chief. I also wish to thank the other city departments that assisted during the fire and throughout the week. Every call I made, my needs got done. The Department of Public Works was amazing. The 22, actually 23 mutually departments came to assist us, as far as west as Sharon and Milford, and east to Avon and Plainville. Whether it was during the initial fight or retaining operational periods throughout the day, they came. Special acknowledgement goes to Winston and Chief Field, and Harmington Westside and Chief Kellogg. They assisted us even beyond the day of the fire and this wonderful community. The outpour of support was very kind, thoughtful, and simply amazing. The state organizations and their resources, FEIU, a drone for mapping from the Connecticut State Police Reconstruction Mapping Team, the Three Cadaver Dogs, the State's Attorney's Office, and DEEP with their air monitoring and water runoff evaluations, the utility companies. They did what we needed them to do. EverSource Electric killed power to the entire area, which is about 800. Then once we got that under control, down to 75, which was Isolated Prospect Street, and then just a few in the plaza. EverSource Gas shut off the gas at their property, had to dig a hole on Cameron Street to access the gas line. And Aquarian, the Torrington Water Company, Scotty Quinn was at our command post the entire time working with us and allowing us, you know, telling us how much water. There was a point where we used so much water, it was getting almost critical for the city. They also sent alerts to their customers, keep an eye out for low pressure and you make it brown water. So all three utility companies were spot on with us. And I cannot forget our city public safety partners, Trinity EMS and the Torrington Police Department. Trinity stood by the fire in case there were any injuries, and I can say there were zero injuries reported from that fire. The supervisor was at our command post the entire time. TPD assisted with traffic control, pedestrian control, which is very challenging in itself, scene security the days and nights following, the support from the command staff under DC Barone, and the Detective Bureau assisting with the investigation and a drone, and finally Drakeville. They committed a lot of time pumping a lot of water to our aerial devices. They even volunteered to pull shifts throughout the night to continue to feed the water rail ladder truck I was able to acquire and loan. In my 29-year career in Torrington, I've never seen such an outstanding professional group of men and women that served this wonderful community. I continue to be a servant to you and a servant to the city of Torrington. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I kind of feel like the report is, it doesn't adequately describe the incredible professionalism and skill that was brought to the table by all of our fire department, and particularly the command staff. And I say this, and I know that you keep deflecting, but I have to remind this board, just like I did the Board of Safety, Fire Chief Trip was leading the command without a deputy, you know, because here we have a vacancy in this department. And I just, I keep reflecting on the incredible responsibility, and I know it's all about delegation, and I know you know your team, you know your command staff, you know your firefighters, and you're able to do that delegation, but it was done so skillfully, so efficiently and effectively. So you got an applause, I think you're owed a standing applause, to be honest. Just incredible work.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Are we standing?
Yeah. Go ahead. Stand. Let's stand and applaud this guy. So I said this at the Board of Safety meeting, I feel like standing there watching this fire happen Sunday morning and then dealing with the phone calls that we had to make on Monday while you're still, you know, commanding the ongoing fire, because it went right through Thursday. There were still flames that were being doused on Thursday. I keep saying I was going through all those stages of grief, you know, like anger and denial and, you know, all of those, you know, those stages, because I just feel like this is, I need, it bears repeating, second-largest fire in the city of Torrington. Gavlik is the only fire that was bigger than this. So this was ugly in every sense of the word. The fact that there were no injuries was miraculous in every sense of the word. The fact that this fire department saved an ongoing manufacturing business that opened up Thursday? They brought their employees back in Friday?
Yeah. I think today was the first day there should have been.
Yeah.
Full staff, I think.
So, you know, it's not just, you know, that they contained the fire where it was, but they prevented the fire from extending into an ongoing business operation. And while I say that was incredibly ugly, what I know is the cleanup afterwards is going to be uglier. And Chief Trip joined me on some phone calls to the Governor's Office, to DECD. We've been reaching out to EPA and our partners through the Regional Brownfield Partnership through the NVCOG. Many of the board members that are, were board members back in 2014 when we made the decision to become partners or to become members of the NVCOG so we could access that expertise. We've been utilizing all of our resources, our state representatives, to try to bring to bear the funds that we're going to need to do the cleanup, because everything on that site is contaminated. Friday morning, Chief Trip called me. He said, "I'm on site. DEEP is here. They're shutting everything down. They want the fence up. You can't touch another brick." Because now you need the certified environmental demolition team to go in there. So all of this leads me to the next person that's in the lineup to do a little bit of a report out on that front. William, I don't know if you want to unmute yourself and talk a little bit about where we are in all of that outreach. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. So it is complex. There's a lot of different ways to go about this. I guess first and foremost, there's a $6 million brownfield remediation grant, which we submitted in September, and anticipate hearing an award December, or an award decision late November or early December. That $6 million would go towards the remaining demolition costs, would go towards the abatement and removal of any contaminated materials on the site. As far as the extent of the contamination caused as a result of the fire and the disturbance to the property, we don't have that number yet. So what we're looking to do in order to ascertain what the actual cleanup costs are going to be is to partner with NVCOG and the Regional Brownfield Partnership, and also with EPA in order to get environmental professional on site that will help build the cost estimate, and that will roll over into using the $6 million remediation grant to clean up the property. So I keep talking about the $6 million grant as if we've already been awarded. That's not the case. But we do have continued conversations with the ECD to keep them up to date as the status of the project, the absolute comparative nature of completing the remediation, just because of the extent of the safety hazard, the health and safety hazard that this site presents, the challenge of safely securing the property. It's, it's just incredibly imperative to get the remediation underway, and we've been impressing that to DCD. I did mention in the memo that I provided that despite the fact that the property owner has not been responsive, or we have not been able to get in touch with the property owner, there are state statutes that enable cities and municipalities to gain access to the property to conduct the environmental assessment work that I'm talking about. I did provide that specific statute in the memo that I provided the City Council, and that, that statute has been used by many municipalities in order to gain access to properties in situations like this, in order to get the environmental assessment work completed, which will enable us down the line to complete the demolition, remediation, and abatement.
Thank you. I don't know if it's possible, William, from where you are, can you pull up the map to show the council the buildings that were destroyed and the buildings that were saved?
As long as I'm able to share. So this, if I'm, I'm sharing now, if you can see.
Yeah.
So this is the property, the general yellow outline is generally the property that we're talking about right off of Litchfield and Summer Street. If you can see my cursor, this is what we're, 200 Litchfield Street, the Longstreet Building. The red portion has been completely demolished. When I say completely demolished, there's no building there, there's still rubble. The yellow portion is completely damaged, but we're not, was not demolished to this point. It will need to be raised at some point. The red portion here is 105 Summer Street, so every, every remaining portion is 105 Summer Street. This red portion is completely demolished. This red portion is mostly demolished. This yellow portion to the front is still standing, but the significant fire damage will likely need to be completely demolished. And then off to the left of the site, or the western side of the map, here is where Industrial Saw is operating, some minimal fire damage that was successfully, you know, contained, and they are back up in operation. This last building at the bottom here, there was no known fire damage to that property in that location. And for those who know or don't know, this middle section here was a result of a different fire from approximately 2009 timeframe. I do want to note one last thing, is that because of the extensive damage and demolition that happened during the firefighting efforts, we did notify the State Historic Preservation Office, because this building had been listed on the National Registry. SHPO came out to view the property last week, and they made determination that the property was so severely damaged that it did not rate listing anymore, so it will be removed as one of the historic properties in 2025.
Thank you. I think the only thing that I can add to that is, as you could see, the yellow external boundary runs along the railroad track. DOT and the Nogatuck Railroad also came out to inspect the tracks. I think there was some rubble that fell during the firefighting and the demolition that was necessary to allow the fire department to have access. So we are also working with Nogatuck Railroad to make sure that those tracks are cleared and, and restored if necessary, so that the continued efforts to bring tourist train traffic back into the city. And I think the only other important information that the council should be apprised of is... Did I lose Corporation Counsel off the call? Is he still on? Oh, he is. So Attorney Magistrally, do you want to just talk a little bit about where we are with the blight fines and foreclosure proceedings?
We had initiated foreclosure actions against both parcels, 105 Summer and 200 Litchfield Street some time ago, and we were really just waiting for appraisals to be done before we could move for judgment. And so the plan, our plan was to move forward with the foreclosure. The blight liens, the last I looked at them, they were close to $500,000 on each parcel. And, you know, I haven't seen it, we haven't gotten the appraisals yet, but I think that the appraiser I spoke to said that he didn't think that the properties would be anywhere near that value, which would mean we'd be asking the court for strict foreclosure. I'm hoping the appraiser will finish his work soon. I know he's been to the, to the property after the fire. I reached out to him to inform him of the fire, of course, like everybody else, he already knew about it. And he did go out and visit the site, because that obviously will have an impact on the appraisal that he'll be completing and providing that will allow us to move for judgment. The other, the other piece of this that, I have no idea how it's going to play out, is there is a Connecticut statute that provides that a city that has blight liens against the property can make claims against the proceeds of any fire insurance that is forthcoming. At this point, I don't have any idea if the property is insured. I did have a brief meeting with Terry Sonneman, who's the State's Attorney, who will be handling this, this case on the state criminal side, and she didn't have any information about insurance either. And at that point, and I can't remember if it was last Thursday or Friday, she said, I think kind of echoing what, what Chief Trip said, nobody had had any contact with this property owner at all. Nobody, they can't find him, they can't track him down. So that kind of remains to be seen, whether there even is insurance. I don't, I don't know, there might not be insurance, but certainly if there is, we'll make an appropriate claim against any proceeds of insurance, but it's probably not going to be anywhere close to what will be needed to clean the property up. And ultimately, it's hard to say what will happen, but again, I don't, I don't see that there's going to be a lot of equity in this property, so I would be surprised if a judge ordered foreclosure by sale, but I've been surprised by our Superior Court judges before. The one thing I can say is there's no mortgage on either parcel, so we don't have to worry about lenders who sometimes can, you know, gum up the works a little bit. And if the United States was a lender, like in, in a lot of residential properties, there might be a HUD mortgage on a property, and if there's, if the United States has an interest, there has to be a foreclosure by sale. So I would anticipate if we, if we get to a motion for judgment, hopefully soon, it'll be strict foreclosure. And that's really about all I can say at this point.
Thank you. So it's a lot, it's a lot to digest, receiving a report like this. I don't know if any of you have questions?
Is there a mortgage holder on this property?
There is not.
No. No, and I can't remember, I, I think he might be current with his property taxes, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure. I know he's not, he's not current with personal property taxes, and that's a whole separate issue, but I can't recall if he was current with real property taxes.
No. So he was delinquent on the 23 and 24 grand list. 24 grand list having just been due July 1st. But yeah, he is about $55,000 delinquent in real estate taxes.
And those, those take priority over the city's blight liens.
Correct.
And the folks that Lana Gosley works with at Torrington Tax Collector have proposed, you know, there's a statute that appears to provide for blight liens to be wrapped up into real property tax liens, and I've had some discussions with, with her attorneys on that before. And I guess we'll look at that again, because they're suggesting that that might be something that would be to our advantage, but I'll, I'll need to look at the statutes they're talking about and figure that out.
Other questions for either Chief Trip, Mr. Wallach, or Corporation Counsel?
You know, I would, Madam...
Just a quick question. Cleanup of the building, but there's brownfields and a rest of the property. Can we combine the cleanup efforts at all, or does it really get segmented in parcels?
So the, the cleanup of this property is, and that was the better part of the, our conversation we had with our partners at the NVCOG this afternoon. Because all of the contamination, both the hazardous building material and any soil contamination have been commingled, it's, it's all considered, you know, hot. It's, it really, it really is going to require us to do some character, characterization of the contamination. It's, it really, it really is going to require us to do some character, characterization of the contamination. You know, with the brick, with the steel beams, with the wood beams. And those will have to be identified, removed, and then we can get into the soil to determine what the, what the contamination is in the soil. This is not a short process. This is not something that's going to happen in the next two weeks or two months. And we're going to do everything we can to keep it moving as quickly as we can. And I'm looking at William as I'm saying this, because the goal is accessing funds as quickly as we can and utilizing any existing state contracts or LEPs that are already, there's already been a competitive bid process to retain. But it is going to take a little bit of time, and it's going to fall to the next administration to continue to work through. And William, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
The only thing is that in discussion with NVCOG, who, you know, Ricardo Rodriguez is kind of leading the discussion with them. The goal right now for order of operations is to get a LEP on the site to begin building out the assessment work and guide the process for removing the materials, so that way we can get a real idea of what the contamination is that remains on site and how we go about remedying the water and groundwater. That's going to take a while. But like the mayor said, the first thing we have to do is get the environmental professional on the site to do that work.
Any other questions? So you heard me giving accolades to Chief Tripp. I, I have to do the same, William, Corporation Counsel, our delegation, Senator Harding, Senator Honig, and Representative Case, Representative Canino, I think, is in Italy. So while I have every reason to believe he knows there was a fire, he really has been unavailable for any of the facilitation of conversations. But I honestly, I'm so proud of the team effort to not only support the fire department in those efforts, but to get the oars in the water and start figuring out how we're going to bring this contaminated barge to shore. So, thank you all. Anything else? Then we're going to move into the next agenda item. I'm moving into item number seven. So this comes up every election cycle. And it's always a challenge because it comes up at an election cycle. But just for the public's information, why, why does it come up during an election cycle? In compliance with Article 19 of the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, any vote or motion or approval of a salary adjustment for an elected position has to be done within a period of time prior to the election. So that is the reason this comes up in the election cycle. And Carol, is it 90 days before the election cycle? Is there? So, but then it can come forward. All right. So item number seven, I would be looking for, I would be looking for emotion from the floor. Do I have any motion?
No move.
But we have to talk about-
I have a motion.
Yeah. We have to talk about the amount and the terms. Okay?
So I've moved to have the position of treasurer increase effective July 1, 2026 from $15,000 to $20,000 annually. And then adjusted, you know, with the thereafter with wage increases aligned with the management resolution.
All right, so the motion, yes. So the motion on the floor is for an increase for the treasurer's position from, I think it's, it's $15,600 and change to $20,000. So that would be a salary adjustment effective July 1, 2026, with future wage increases to be aligned with the provisions of management resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So the motion made by Councilwoman Rowett and seconded by Councilwoman Oliver, and the floor is open for discussion.
Just to follow up the motion.
Yes.
We know we, we value the treasurer's contribution, and certainly he deserves much more. The worry is how we can afford to do that, but we, we thought, and I appreciate the memo that we received from our treasurer. He is, you know, incredibly valuable to the city, and certainly all of what he's been able to secure in terms of additional revenue for the city. So although I think it's menial increase of $5,000, it was, I think, reasonable for us to, to do that. It's about a 20% increase. And yes, we all know you need, you deserve more.
Mm-hmm.
Farley.
I really feel it still falls short of what it, what we should be compensating him, given a workload involved. I, I think Dan alone has probably saved the city millions on some of his initiatives. Finding the savings, finding the good investments and all around. So that is really a worthwhile role, and an ask of $40,000, I, I think, very viable.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say that the, an ask of 40 is viable? I, I just want to make sure I heard that.
Yeah, $40,000 as per the memo.
All right. Thank you.
You, you have to look at, great, we have Dan making a great civic contribution, but how are you going to attract other talent in the future? And we, we have to keep pace with, you know, even at $40,000, that's a modest salary for the, the workload involved for, for the city, because if you had to hire a full-time treasurer role, it'd be much more.
Six figures plus.
Yeah. So we appreciate the elected role and a modest salary, but a great contribution. But again, attracting talent to, to that role.
Would never argue, make that argument. We just have two other salary increases on the agenda, of which, I know, we're going to have discussion on those as well. Budget wasn't really prepared for, even though this is all effective July 1. That it is, you know, I thought it was palatable to the community at this point. So.
If I may?
Please.
The, you know, this is a really inenviable position to be in as a council and as a community. Even at 40, I would say Dan is a bargain for the value that he brings to this community and extracts from very other, you know, various other elements of the community, from blight, from the small city, small city loan grant program, where the repayment has been unlike anything we've seen in a long time. So it's, it's just hard too, because, you know, we just came off a budget cycle where, you know, for about the last three months, four months, pretty much everywhere I go, it's, you know, am I going to afford, can I? When I talk to people, can I continue to afford to live in Torrington anymore? Because now our tax base is a little bit more reflective of some of the towns around us, but the real estate prices aren't there. So it's, we're in between a rock and a hard place right here. And I understand Dan's ask, and I think it's honestly appropriate. But it's what can we do that is palatable and acceptable to all the taxpayers in Torrington? And having some of the conversations I've had with Dan about managing our deposit accounts and CDs and interest rates, I mean, God, we're blessed to have him. It's just what can we continue to bear as a community? Try to keep everybody happy with all these plates in the air. It's very, very difficult. I'm just going to support, begrudgingly support, you know, Ann's motion. But I think this is a longer term problem that we have to wrap our minds around, both emotionally and fiscally. Because Dan is the greatest bargain we have. I mean, it's a return on his investment alone, his effort alone. I mean, it's probably a million percent when you look at all the things he's done to bring revenue in and control cost and just what he does day in and day out, just being naturally him. I mean, it was a blessing to have Art Mattiello here, and he raised the bar. I mean, Dan built floors. He didn't just raise the bar, he built floors. You know, so I wish I, I wish I could just reach in my pocket and give it to you. I really do. You deserve it. There's a few, there's a lot of people in the city that do deserve it, but you do absolutely deserve it. So I'm sorry that I'm going to support something less than that, but please know it has nothing to do with you or your performance, because you're an invaluable resource to this community, and I couldn't thank you more for your efforts.
And I greatly appreciate all those comments. And I do remind the council that the decisions that are made inure to the position, not the person.
Right.
And that's why this is written into the state constitution the way that it is. That's why it's tied to, you know, election cycles. Because it's a determination on what the taxpayers of the community can afford to pay for the position. And I would agree with you. What Mr. Farley brings to the table beyond the fiscal decisions that he's made, just the professionalism in getting us through official statements for bonding and all of that. But again, because this is a position that we're talking about, not a person.
Right.
I think that, to everything that you just spoke of, that is how the council has to look at this.
No, I understand completely, but I don't ever want to look at something just as a position, because that's like looking at a person just for their skin. There's so much more to that person than that, you know? And I think it was just worth taking a minute to, to really pay homage and let the city know, if people don't know what Dan has done and has done for years, I mean, it's commendable.
Yes, I agree.
So.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? The motion on the table was to increase the salary from its existing $15,697? Is that what it is?
Is there any way to add a cost of living increase to that, to step it up automatically without?
So let me reread the motion. The motion was to increase the salary from its current $15,691 annually to $20,000. And effective July 1, 2026, and then annually thereafter to align with the raises that go with management resolution. So if that answers your question, Mr. Yvain?
But again, I think that, I know we're talking about the position, but in order to attract someone to this position at some point, we're going to really have to take a deeper dive into this. Because the compensation is not really reflective of what that position does. And it's a profit center. You know, we don't have a lot of profit centers here, you know, there's a lot of cost centers. So I just think that to attack, to attract the talent that you want in that seat, in this chamber, helping move the city forward, that we're going to have to take a deeper look at to that compensation, because it's low. And I'll say the same thing about Mayor too, but we're not there yet. But it's, we, we have to be accountable and responsible and manage that position more appropriately, I think.
Well said.
The other thing I would like to do too, in the future for consideration, is to move this discussion away from the actual election. It's just too close to it. We've had this conversation for years. I mean, it's just, I think it's time we try to tackle this and maybe tie it more toward the budget conversation, since we're already have our sleeves rolled up at that point anyways. It's a more appropriate time, and this way it doesn't appear that, there's less election appearance or conflict.
So to that point, I would suggest that with the motion that was made to, to allow for an alignment of future wage increases with the management resolution, that is a budgetary decision, and it is made annually. So there is an opportunity, if this motion passes as read, those opportunities would exist in the budget process.
All right.
So this is a one-time adjustment, but annual incremental increases can happen during the budget cycle.
Okay.
If that's the way I understood the motion.
Yes, that's, that's the way the motion was read. I'm more of the mind that at some point we need to look at the compensation of that position at 15, that's, it's kind of ridiculous. You know, there are part-timers at McDonald's make more than that, and they have less influence over the city and its continued operation and fiscal health moving forward. So I just want to put things in perspective, and I feel bad supporting this for Dan, but, or the position, excuse me, at this level, but it is what it is.
Oh, okay. So the motion has been moved. I've got to call this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. Motion?
Because I'm with Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
All right. So item number eight.
Yeah, you're not all bad.
Again, this is being done in compliance with Article 19 of the Constitution of the State of Connecticut. Feel compelled to repeat that, because there is a state constitution that dictates this process. Okay? All right, so do I have a motion from the floor on item number eight with regard to the city clerk's position?
So move.
Yes.
Hold on.
Well.
Hold on. I know you're saying move it. We've got to talk about the terms.
Oh, okay.
The motion doesn't have terms. So if I may-
Sorry, I'll do this one.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion and recommend that the compensation for the elected position of city clerk be increased from $65,000 to $80,000 effective July 1, 2026. Thereafter, future wage increases would align with the management resolution.
So I have a motion and a second. All right, the floor is open for conversation on this one as well?
I would agree. I think Carol is doing a terrific job. Great talents in city clerk office, so, and it's very much appreciated. And it's also competitive, looking at the city salary charts provided. It puts her in a middle pack and not at the bottom.
All right, motion made, seconded. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just add that I think Carol definitely deserves it. She puts a lot of work in. She is our City Clerk of the Year, by the way. So I would support this. Yes.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to try to remind everybody.
I know, it's just so hard. It's so hard, because we have some very valuable people that work here.
We've been fortunate.
We've been very fortunate, and I just, I know we're talking about positions and charters and constitutions and all that stuff matters, but so do the people that press the gas pedal on this.
All right, motion is made, seconded. Any other comments before I call? Carry none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. All right, and then finally, a item number nine. I am looking for a motion from the floor with regard to salary adjustment for the elected position of mayor.
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I move to adjust the mayor's salary from $103,000 to $125,000 effective July 1, 2026. to a hundred and twenty-five thousand effective July one, twenty twenty-six, and thereafter wage increases be aligned with management resolution.
Second.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded. The floor is open for discussion.
I'm going to follow my motion up because these are three elected positions. Basically, the mayor, as most people know, isn't the same in all municipalities. It is a twenty-four seven position. There is no additional compensation for the mayor as it relates to events, you know, unico dance for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's a lot of out of pocket expenses for this position. And I think this increase, although I would have proposed more based on the responsibilities and expectations of the position, but knowing the, our current mayor of twelve years has done this job with no increases over the years except for the last few.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Yes, in twenty twenty-two. She's been in it for twelve years and never took my advice. Called me the godmother, but we have our principals, we have department heads, all of which make more money than the mayor. So I think this small adjustment is, I don't know, is palatable for the city and also needed for the leader of our city, so, yeah.
You know, also too, let's go back to trying to attract the best and brightest or better and brighter, you know, however you want to put it. You know, it's very difficult for some, there are many people within this community that work for the city that make more than the mayor. There are many people within the community that have jobs without the level of responsibility the mayor does, and they get to go home and put their job on pause. You don't have that luxury as a mayor. It's twenty-four seven. Her hourly rate is like a nickel. But with that said, even at this level, we're not attractive enough in that salary offer. If someone was running a hundred million dollar corporation, they'd be making three to five million dollars a year minimum, you know? And here we are, a sliver of that, and without any of the perks. I mean, you're not going to the country club, all the, you're not going on your yacht. But, you know, with all that said, it is difficult. And when the town committees are doing their jobs and trying to find candidates to run for these positions, it's, you know, this at least will help make that financially a little bit more agreeable and the burden hopefully that much less. Because there are people that would also be great candidates, but they're not, they're going to take a thirty, forty, fifty percent pay cut in order to do it, so you don't get them. And that's why the gap is more of a chasm between the private sector and the public sector at the local level. It's, it's, it's challenging and concerning. So I did propose a larger amount. But again, being a fiscal steward for this community, we couldn't in good conscience move forward with those numbers with property taxes going up and are, have gone up and will continue to go up and the continued financial pressures that are on every department within this city and every person within it. I think this is at least a good faith effort and puts the compensation for this position more in alignment than it had been in the past. So I hope we get support for this motion.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All right, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I have for the record, one abstention from Councilwoman Spino. All right, we are moving into item ten. I will entertain a motion to approve the vehicle replacement budget transfer request for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated September ninth, twenty twenty-five, having been previously approved by the Board of Finance on September sixteenth.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And I heard a second from Councilman Oliver. Are there questions or comments on this transfer? Again, it's just a budget transfer. No questions, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and refer the proposed lease of thirty-two City Hall Avenue identified on the assessor's map as Map Block Lot One Seventeen, Block Zero One Seven, Lot Zero Zero Five to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a CGS Section Eight dash two four review upon favorable recommendation, further authorizing the mayor to negotiate lease terms in the best interest of the city.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And I, Ray, do you want to just talk a little bit about the property and the reason we'd be looking? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Jamie, would you like to come and talk to us about? There you are.
So this is property right next to City Hall. And as we are busting at the seams for office space and parking at City Hall, it made sense to lease additional office space, which is greatly needed. It also possibly nets us a lot more parking, and we're looking at moving potentially three, if not four, departments over to that space, which will free up office space within City Hall. Part of that is with all new regulations and file retention, we do not have enough legit storage for certain files, mainly with registrar's office. I know the clerk's office is overloaded with trying to store all these. If we move some of the departments, it would free up a second vault within City Hall, which is desperately needed for the registrar based on what the state's mandating we keep for files with all the new voting regulations. So I think this will be a huge benefit, and it's not in the cards to build anything new, so this looks like a really decent alternative. One of the departments potentially moving would be probate, where they already pay rent. Their rent would still be charged over there to offset the costs to the city in kind of a neutral move, so it wouldn't actually increase it as much.
Thank you, Jamie. The, I, I think that I would only add when you hear that we're so pinched for office space in City Hall in the FY twenty-six budget, you will recall that we budgeted additional positions, for instance, in Corporation Counsel's Office. You know, I know in our finance office, we are really cramped. You know, we've got workstations that are really just, I call them cubicles, they're barely cubicles. So being able to spread some of these additional offices into that new location, open up some of the office space here, reallocate that office space will be tremendously valuable. And then, of course, the added bonus is the additional storage space. The only other thing that Jamie and I discussed, and then Ray and I also discussed, is obviously a long-term interest in this is beyond a lease. Does it make sense for us as part of that negotiation to talk about a potential option to purchase?
Correct.
You know, this is, again, prime real estate located right here, easily accessible to all the departments. So the floor is open. Questions?
All right, I would agree with you, Mayor. It does make sense to acquire that. Is the building, there's three buildings, is my understanding, is that right? And is one building appropriate for office space? Or is it all, are we thinking?
We're, we're looking at the brick building, so the one on the north side, not the white one and not the garage behind.
Okay. Yeah, it, it's appropriate. It's office space now, or do we have to outfit that rehab?
It was, it is office space. It was leased to Priya at the time, but they moved out, changed their business model. So right now, the building is vacant and up for lease. So it also is build to suit. So anything that needs to be modified and changed could be done.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jamie? All right, then I'll call this motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're going to move into item twelve. And Jamie, you might as well stay, oh, good, you stay close, thanks. So I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement for the blight cleanout of the buildings and property located at four ninety-two Prospect Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to Trauma Services LLC of Mansfield, Massachusetts for a contract sum of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. Funding for the project will be paid out of our blight fund.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Yvain, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And because I know there are members of the public that are phoning in or zooming in, Jamie, do you just want to talk a little bit about this particular piece of property and why we would be doing any cleanout of this property?
So this property was a blighted property. The owner was evicted, and it's now owned by the city, and it is loaded to the gills with stuff on the inside. So before we can make a decision on what to do with the property, it needs to be fully cleaned out. So we did an RFP bid process to get people to come in, give us pricing on what it would cost to clean it out. Trauma Services was the best value. That's why we're recommending going with them. This would be cleaned, left in broom swept condition. Then the city can go in and fully assess the property to then decide next steps going forward. But as of right now, it's impossible to decide what to do because you can't move inside. It's just a kind of hoarder situation where it's just loaded with stuff. So it has to be fully cleaned out by somebody qualified. It's more than what the city can tackle.
Thank you, Jamie. And what I would add to that is, again, this is a piece of property that has been blighted, and for a number of years, we had been, the city had been attempting to remediate the blight, working with the property owner. And after, I want to say about ten years of attempts, we finally were able to take this property through the foreclosure proceedings. Obviously, with winter coming and a facilities director that has enough work on his plate, trying to worry about heating another piece of property that really should get on the real estate market as soon as possible and get rid of it before winter really sets in, is the goal. So I greatly appreciate the work that Jamie did to get this price to us as quickly as he did. Other questions or comments? We're good? All right, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's clean it and sell it. All right, item number thirteen. Good, you're staying where you are.
I'm just going to stay.
All right, I need to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the installation of the new ADA compliant door, frame, and automatic opener for the ADA ramp project at the Armory to be completed by DRF Locksmith Specialties. Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Do I have a second?
Timely this one, I like it.
It is, well, on purpose.
Yes.
More than timely.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Yeah. And because these, this was not budgeted, I do have to give credit to, to Jamie and Ray Drew for finding some funds in capital reserve to get this done. So was a fair amount of work, not only getting the quotes, but also identifying where we can find the resources. So motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I will entertain a motion to utilize Connecticut State DAS bid list to approve the installation of the, and of a replacement of the boiler at the Armory to Air Temp Mechanical of Berlin, Connecticut for forty-nine thousand, ninety dollars and eighteen cents. Funding will be coming from Public Works Capital Reserve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Yvain. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There was a bid process on this particular, right?
Yeah, the DA, yeah, the state bid process, yes.
And although I, you know, I supported the last motion, I know that we didn't do the bid process for that, but
That is correct.
Understand the urgency of, of having that door replaced, so, thank you.
Glad you remembered that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I think that was a, a call that I fielded shortly after the last council meeting, and I said, let's move forward and bring it to the council quickly.
Is this air and heat, or is it just heat?
This is a steam boiler, so it's only
Okay, serves the boiler, okay.
It, it serves about half of the building. So when we started to do startups, we noticed that one of the, there's two boilers there. This is a smaller one. It was internally cracked. It's over thirty years old. So we're kind of in a pickle on this one also, and I'd like to be able to have heat where you guys are going to vote. So trying to also get this done ASAP.
Okay.
As of today, the boiler is in stock.
Okay, great. And efficiency gain in this purchase, this changeover?
Steam is very hard to get anything more efficient, so it's going to be about the same.
Okay.
I really wanted to replace everything there. It's just not in the cards right now to rip out all the systems and start from scratch, and I have to make sure this is up and working for this, you know, winter.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I will entertain a motion to approve the replacement of the sprinkler heads at the Public Works Garage by Sound Works and Security of Torrington, Connecticut. In the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, funding will be provided through the Public Works Capital Reserve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Yvain. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none.
Is this just a quick question? Is this something typically in Sound Works repertoire of what they do?
Yes. So they handle most of the fire alarms and sprinkler systems directly tied into it. So all but three buildings now within the city are all handled by Sound Works and Security. They have a, their fire division, they sub out the sprinkler work to a certified sprinkler person, but it runs through Sound Works. Like, they handle all the sprinklers for this building and all the other buildings.
Thank you.
And they're more than competent. I've used them in a number of buildings myself for alarm and serve fire and sprinkler. Their name is a little misleading.
Yes, I expected, I sound similar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, Corporation Counsel, by the way, just signed off. I'm just filling his message. Item number sixteen, I will entertain a motion to utilize state contract number one seven, PSX zero zero two four A B for the purchase of fire department uniforms from Fairfield Uniform Company of Bridgeport, Connecticut, to be paid from uniform allowance line, item is further explained, and our purchasing agent's letter dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. This has already been approved by the Public Safety. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I will entertain a motion to utilize state procurement contract one nine, PSX zero two two zero, and purchase ammunition for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Estimated budget amount for the purchase is thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven and three cents. Funding for the purchase will be charged to uniform allowance and special squads GL accounts as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September twenty-fourth. Thank you. And just for the record, this has been also approved by the Public Safety. So Councilwoman Spino made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette. And I, I have to say it, I'm sorry. Estimated budget amount thirty-four, five seventy-seven and three cents. That is one really close budgeted estimate.
It's a good estimate.
That is a really, so. If there are no questions for the chief.
Just a quick question on that amount. Are we firing off that much ammunition? Or is it just, it has to be refreshed periodically?
Chief, do you want to?
It's like I'm Mexican.
Yeah, compliments. With the current training, in-service trainings that we do with our qualification process, this is what we generally, we're here on this.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to award, execute, and administer a contract under Connecticut DAS, NAS Pope Master Agreement number two-three zero one nine, Contract Two Three, PSX zero one six three, and Tel Repco, Two Three, PSX zero one six three A C dash four PSX 0163, and Tel Repco 23 PSX 0163 AC-4 for the purchase of five Panasonic Toughbook computer systems for police cruisers, any animal control vehicles. Total purchase price is $30,565. Funding comes from the police capital account, commuter systems upgrade, and IT capital projects, all as outlined in our purchasing agent's letter dated September 25th.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And I will add, yes, the Board of Safety did approve this on October 1st. Are there questions? Comments? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, I will entertain a motion to forego the competitive bid process and authorize contracting with the city's current vendor, VHB, to prepare a design for the repair and replacement of the traffic signal mast pole and the intersection of New Hamilton Road and East Main Street. The mast pole was permanently damaged in a motor vehicle accident and requires a full replacement to ensure safety and compliance.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And we have our traffic officer, Sergeant Baldis, here to answer questions if you have any.
Is this something that we can... This was from a motor vehicle accident. So can we bill their insurance company for this? Is this something we can go after or is the city responsible for this?
So we are going to attempt to. I've already put the claim in. There was commercial motor vehicle insurance, so hopefully that threshold makes it a little bit higher and a little bit more palatable. Again, what the insurance company may or may not argue may determine what they're going to try to reimburse, but we are going to go for the full amount considering the amount of damage that was done. It is just ruin the integrity of the entire mast pole.
Thank you. Any other questions before he takes his seat? We're good. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 20, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of 16 Hewlett Packard computers and 27 monitors to replace the aging equipment across city as part of the technology replacement cycle. The equipment will be procured through the state of Connecticut's reverse auction contracts. This is the item or contract number 23 PSX 0163-RA, and the total cost is $16,921.20, and the funding is being charged to the GL account 5345.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions?
I have one.
Yes.
What is the average age of the computer that we're replacing? For the good of the order? Doesn't start with Commodore, does it?
No. The average age is somewhere in around both eight to 10 years.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry? Hearing none. Thanks, Jerry. I'll call the motion, "All in Favor."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 21, I'll entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments on Fund Number 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvements. It is invoiced 246430 to Wright Pierce in the amount of $1,183.01. This is for the Winstead Road Force Main and Tunnel Design. And invoice 246430 Wright Pierce Engineers $8,789.64 for the Winstead Road FM replacement project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, and seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 22, I'll entertain a motion to accept the building department report for the month of September 2025.
So moved.
Second.
That was Councilman Waldron. Thank you. And Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 23, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds. Motion made by Councilwoman Spino. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 24, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize sewer use refunds. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 25, I'll entertain a motion to open the agenda or meeting to business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, we got a whole room full of you guys. So let's start with our treasurer. Do you have anything from the treasurer's office?
I'm a trustee. I'm a seller.
Yes, yeah. As a department head, yeah. Or you could wait and do it as a member of the public if you...
Well, I know. That's why I wasn't sure where to address it.
Bring it in.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for your kind words and consideration of this pay raise. Just think for a second now. When we go out to bond, I spend, I estimate probably 120 hours on just the bonding project alone. So that boils down to about my current salary at around $7,200 bucks a year. So the other $9,000 that I make is spread out over 900 hours, a conservative amount of work that I do. So it boils down to about $10 an hour for all the other work that's done. Now, with that being said, I don't do this for the money. I do it because I care about our city. So I thank you for the increase. I'm more than happy with it. But please, it's something that we need to consider going forward, as David said, you know, to get someone else in that position that's going to do the job and do it properly. I'd be concerned going forward. So that's my only thoughts, but thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So well said. Thank you, Dan. Purchasing agent, anything to add this evening? Our HR director is in the room. Anything from HR tonight, Denise? All right, our budget manager is in the room. Anything for budget?
I'm actually speaking on behalf of the comptroller tonight. She informed me that our audit is almost wrapped up. They have done all of the review that they need to do here. They are sending it to Leslie Zoll, who is the partner for her review, and fingers crossed, we'll have the audit issued before the mayor leaves office. So that's exciting and that's a huge compliment to our comptroller, Olivia. She's done amazing on this audit, so.
Wonderful.
Absolutely. Now, I'm so glad you shared that. And you know, that is practically unheard of. And from our auditor's perspective, they greatly appreciate when they have a team like Olivia and Erica, our purchasing agent, our treasurer, that's all ready to provide them the answers. And on the board of education side, because they also have to do their share.
Correct.
So that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, anything further from facilities this evening? All right, thank you. Ray, anything from Public Works? Thank you. And Paul, anything from engineering? All right, going to our traffic officer, anything that you want to share this evening, Sergeant?
I don't think I've said nothing.
We're good. Chief Baldwin, you could close this up nicely if you want. Oh, goodness. City Clerk's office.
I'd like to join the treasurer with saying thank you so much. I really, really appreciate the raise and I really appreciate your kind words. That was wonderful. I agree with moving it to the budget season. I sat next to my predecessor for many years, just sit there through this awful vote. It's not fun at election time. The management resolution aspect was voted on the last time.
Right.
And it didn't happen. We did not get an increase. Heather has gotten increases under management resolution. So there's a little disconnect somewhere that we'll have to look at. But again, thank you very, very much.
Wait. All right, well, I'll take that conversation offline. You're saying the last time the raises were approved, that they were supposedly aligned with management res?
Yep.
My recollection was slightly different, that it wasn't.
All right, we'll research it.
Absolutely, we should.
Okay.
Hundred percent. Yeah, there would be. There would be.
There would be.
Hundred percent. Yeah, my recollection, it wasn't. Yeah. Anyways, all right. Corporation Counsel did have to sign off. So I think that wraps up our department heads. I'm going to move into item 26. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and member.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting to my left, anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
I've said enough. Thank you.
It is well.
Councilwoman Spino?
I just want to thank the fire department, Chief Trip, all the firefighters, men and women, what they did last weekend. Incredible work. I was down there a few times. First thing Sunday morning, I went down. Absolutely amazing what they did and what they were able to accomplish. They worked well together with all the other departments. It was quite the operation. So thank you to all of you.
Councilman Iveyne?
Thank you. I am disappointed to see the factory burned down as it did. It's a piece of our city's history, but I'm very happy with the way it was managed and there were no injuries. And so I'm hopeful that we could rehabilitate the property and get it back up and running.